Meeting of the Bucksport Planning Board to order. Roll call.
Stephen Bishop.
Here.
Ryan McDonald.
Here.
David Grant's absent, he won't be here. Steve Feid is absent. Dave Edward Belcher.
Here.
George Hanson.
Here.
Jay Dross.
Here.
Review and acceptance of minutes from the May seventh, two thousand nineteen meeting.
Move that be accepted as drafted.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I wasn't there, so. Chair report, there is none. Code Enforcement Officer.
Well, I have to report tonight is there's a MMA is putting on a training session for Planning Board and Board of Appeal members. They do that every year throughout the state. And there's one coming up in September, September twelfth in Orno at the Black Bear Inn. If anybody's interested in attending that, let me know. I think you just signed up for that.
What day, what day is that?
In a second here. September the twelfth is a Thursday.
What time is the training?
Four thirty to eight thirty.
Yeah, I'm interested in that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it the same that it's been? I think I go twice.
Yeah, it's a pretty similar format. They just, they, they focus mostly for Planning Board members, but they do get into Board of Appeals as well. And so if anybody else wants to go, let me know. You'll either tell me now.
I can, I have something in my brain, instead of something on my calendar, but.
I'll put you down.
Just point in my life, I'm like, it's not nothing too important, it's on my calendar.
There's a registration fee, but the, the town pays for that. You just have to cover your own travel costs, but, so. And I'll plan on going too. That's all I have.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the limited public forum, which is an opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucksport that is not on the agenda this evening. Would anyone like to speak?
I'll wait until.
Jim Morrison, East Buck Sport. How's everybody tonight?
Good, how are you?
Okay.
My, my first question is, uh, the renovations and things that are going on at Wilson Hall, is there a plan set in place for the permits to, to be done for that? That's gonna be changed from a school use to whatever he's going to change it to. I'm sure he's not gonna move school in there, so it has to go through permitting for that.
Yeah, he, if I may, he, he has a permit to do the structural repairs that are needed. He also submitted a floor plan with his application, but there's been no use permitted yet there. His, his plan is to convert it into multifamily. But that has not been permitted yet. The only thing that's been permitted is the structural repairs.
Now, will that go through a, a one or a two, uh, review?
That, that'll be a level one, level one review. It's not gonna require Planning Board approval.
Okay, uh, my next question is, uh, it used to, I, I think it used to say, or, or I, I read it somewhere, what the regulation is on putting a guard rail on the roadside? If there's a certain depth to the ditch area or the area adjacent to the road. Do you have any idea, or does anybody know what that depth is before they have to put a guard rail up?
Along the public road, you're talking about?
Yes, along the public road, yes.
I don't.
I don't, would that be highway or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, some DOT would be.
DOT, yeah.
I, I tried to find it in DOT, but it just, you go on skipping from site to site to site.
Public works maybe wouldn't.
We've got, we've got some pretty good canyons out there, you know, alongside the roads. I mean, when you turn from the Bucks Mills Road onto the Church Road, you're looking at that by the canyon right there that they put on that corner. I just was wondering if there was any regulation on how deep that had before they put a rail up. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? Limited public forum.
If you're telling community and economic development, uh, I'm not sure if Jeff has mentioned this and is reported on, but as you're aware, Whole Oceans has closed on the sale of the property at the mill site. The town manager and I are starting the process of, uh, TIF with, with them. They're getting their paperwork ready so that they come to this board here. I know Jeff's doing a lot of, uh, pre-work, uh, to get this moving, so. We'll be requiring the Planning Board for that project. We don't have a timeframe as of yet, but just know that'll be on the horizon. And, um, as part of the ADAPT master plan today, and Jeff accompanied us at this meeting today, we talked about complete streets. And not quite sure where we're going with that as of yet, but we had a presentation in regards to that. And that's your, your street width, your sidewalks, and not quite sure if that's gonna require Planning Board, but if so, we'll be bringing that to you as well with any of those changes that we may look into doing in the future.
What are you referring to?
Uh, complete streets, that's, uh.
What street?
It's called complete streets, it's a concept. You may be familiar with, uh, bike lanes, travel lanes, sidewalks, you had trees to the sidewalk, benches. You maybe shorten, if it's a sixty foot, uh, road, you may make it a little bit smaller so you can widen your sidewalks, uh, to add benches and trees and all that. But like I said, I'm not sure if that would have to come here, but we're working on that as, as well.
I have no idea what you are talking about.
It's an MDOT project. It's called complete streets.
Doesn't exist.
Not, not today. Not today.
You don't even know where it's gonna be located. Where is complete street?
No, it's a concept.
To change all the streets.
Yes, to train, to change.
Standing darns.
Like if it was Main Street, like if we wanted to make Main Street compatible so you could have a bike riding up and down it, what you would do is you would make the travel lane. So that's, that's what that is. So we, we're talking about that at the ADAPT committee level.
It's nothing for us to worry about.
There's nothing for you to worry about tonight.
It's gonna happen in my lifetime.
Well, you might wanna ride a truss, because you're getting a little older.
Yeah.
So you need a nice wide lane.
Complete streets is basically for, you know, travel pedestrians, so. That's what we're up to today. Okay.
Well, that's a good idea.
Thank you guys.
All right. To, to fill in a few more details about Whole Oceans, the Whole Oceans project, we had a meeting with, uh, the engineer hired by Whole Oceans to prepare their site plan. Uh, all department directors are at the meeting, town manager, myself, and, um, members of the, uh, representatives from Whole Oceans were, were there as well. They showed us the preliminary draft of the plan, which essentially is, um, two, two structures. One is about an eight acre structure, and the other one's significantly smaller. The smaller one is, is, uh, for hatchery, and the larger one is, is for the grow out tanks. So that's, that's the first phase of the project. And we have a second phase, uh, years down the road, that would possibly provide another grow out, uh, building and another hatchery. So they're working on a plan right now. Part of their project involves some site work that is, um, is impacting MMA's project. There's, um, when the MMA moved their lot line, um, they came to you for approval to them and the subdivision plan, the, the relocated line was proving to be a conflict to some, some grading work that Whole Oceans was doing on their project. They ended up, well, I don't know if it's finalized yet, but they were talking about getting grading easement. So the Whole Oceans could do their grading work across the property line onto MMA's prop- uh, property. The problem is that it impacted about ten parking spaces. If you recall, there was a, um, near the top of their lot, there were a row of parking spaces. Ten of those spaces would be impacted by that grading easement. I, I don't know if they've ironed out that, uh, conflict or not, uh, so.
But that's between them, right?
Right now, it is, I don't know if, uh.
Whole Oceans level above the parking lot?
Yeah.
Build a rotating one.
Well, that, that was, uh, something they talked about doing. Like I said, I, I have not heard any, any final decisions yet, but, uh, that's been, it's a bit of a holdup, I think, for.
Well, the line change that they came in here for was on the opposite side of that property, right, next to the stack.
Yes.
Well, I, I, yeah, well, uh, regardless of which line was moved, there's, there's turned out to be some sort of an issue with, uh, providing enough space for the grading that Ho- that the Whole Oceans needs to do on the southerly end of their lot.
Yeah, that's right, they didn't have anything, our line, the one that, where they had us move was the, the one on the, on the stack, it was the other one, yeah, that's good.
Well, hopefully they'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Maybe they'll resolve it, yeah.
Tip off. Anything else? Jeff, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll close the limited public forum. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, public hearing for proposed amendment to the Bucksport Town Code, Appendix K, land use ordinance for the purpose of changing the minimum dimensions of our parking space and making miscellaneous corrective edits.
So, um, as you recall, there are some changes that came about, uh, what, what started the change, the, this current amendment is a request to reduce the minimum parking space size from ten by twenty to nine by eighteen, which is more of a standard size that DOT uses. So when I started preparing the amendment, I realized there were a couple of other things that should have been done in the last amendment, but were overlooked, and I'll go through those. Can you read that so I can clear it up?
Can you guys read that?
So it's actually an eight point five point three. The references to post-secondary education facilities, private school, public schools have been deleted, and now we're just talking about schools. As you recall, the last amendment, we changed that, and the definition of schools was changed to include all of other types of schools into one category. So this is just a, uh, a change to update the section in, that pertains, that describes the education uses to reflect the changes that were made. And then, in a similar fashion, in thirteen four, those changes were also made to eliminate the labels that are, are no longer being used. And then we get into the actual requests that was made to change the parking size from ten by twenty to nine by eighteen, which is made in, um, in, uh, item number one. That's the only change in that section. And another thing that was missed was adding a criterion to address the accessibility standard that was added in the ordinance. Recall in section twelve, under public safety, we added, uh, some language that talks about making certain properties, um, public properties and public buildings are made accessible when they come to you for a review. But there was no, uh, review, uh, findings added to section eight, so this is, uh, section fifteen, excuse me, so this has been added. Number seven. And that was it for the changes that were proposed. However, I'd like the board to consider possibly adding another change, and this pertains to fees. And what I'm suggesting you consider adding in this amendment is the following changes. The entire content of section eleven point six is deleted. That section makes references to how fees are calculated, and what additional fees might be required, including special meeting fees, or consultant fees, or a service fee if you had to, if you needed to have somebody, uh, do a, um, recording of the meeting. All those, all those, uh, references are, are in the schedule of fees right now, so there's no need to.
The town maintains a, a documented schedule of fees.
Right, right, so the, the fees, the fee, uh, formula that's listed in section eleven point six point two is in the schedule of fees that the town adopted. So we're taking it out of the land use ordinance, so that makes it easier if the town council wants to change any fees. It's a much simpler process, there's no need to have, hold a public hearing, uh, it has, doesn't have to go through the Planning Board. It's just something that the town, uh, council does by resolve. We did that when we updated, uh, the, uh, building ordinance, the, which previously contained fees, those were taken out, and those, and those also now are only in the schedule of fees. So the, the language to replace it is as follows. Any application for a land use permit must include a review fee, which is identified in the town's schedule of fees as adopted by the Bucksport Town Council. The review fee is intended to cover the town's administrative cost of an application review, including but not limited to photocopies, published notices, mailings, consultants, special meetings, and legal assistance. Any portion of a, a review fee remaining after completion of a review shall be applied to additional town permit fees required for the approved project. Application review fees may not be refunded.
I know the town manager's not here, but do you have any, has she seen this?
No.
She has not.
No. She's aware that, that, um, that I'm coming to the board tonight with some proposed changes, but, um, hadn't had a chance to share these with her. I just wrapped these up late this afternoon to make a couple additional changes. This is an effort to make things simpler.
Right.
In Appendix K, and that, and it leaves the, the job of figuring out what fees are reasonable to charge for your review, or the code enforcement officer review, up to the town council through the schedule of fees. One thing that, uh, the cadre of this is the, the fee for Whole Oceans, the, the Planning Board review fee for Whole Oceans, if I understand the cost of their project accurately, is going to be, using the formula we have here now, seventeen thousand dollars. Their building permit fee will be probably around eleven thousand dollars. So there, there might be some discussion when the schedule of fees is updated to establish a cap, a fee to be no more than.
No, because you don't know how long it's gonna take to do the project. You're on the job all the time, from start to finish, pretty much.
I'm talking about the site plan review, Ed, the site plan review fee I'm talking about. Right now, there's no cap, but that's why their fee right now, as it's currently established, is gonna be around seventeen grand.
Well, the last sentence in, in your, takes care of that. Any, any fees left over from the review can be applied to the plumbing permit, the electrical permit, whatever. So.
Right.
I don't.
But it doesn't say that right now, Ed, that's why this language is put in here, so we can, you can take money that's left over from the, uh, site plan review fee and apply it to other permit fees. Right now, there's no mechanism to do that.
That wouldn't make this, that be unreasonable.
But there could also be some discussion about putting a cap on building permit fees too. I mean, uh, this is a discussion to be had by the town council, um, in the not too distant future, I think, so. Uh, right now, what we're looking at here is just taking all the references to fees out of Appendix K, where they don't need to belong anymore. And if you're comfortable with adding this in to the proposed amendments, which are being, uh, reviewed, uh, under the public hearing right now, tonight, then, uh, we can do that. Or if you're not comfortable that the public has been given adequate notice of this, with added changes, we can, um, uh, table the public hearing and put a notice in the paper saying that the public hearing's been tabled and explain why. And take up the, you know, the final, the final decision at the next month's meeting, it's up to you, whatever you're comfortable with.
Where our town manager is also our finance director, just playing with anything that, that involves money that could affect anybody's project, I'd just really like to, like to get her stamp of approval on anything that would involve fees or anything financial at all that could affect anybody's projects. So if we could table that portion, or just to get her stamp of approval on that before we move forward, that would make me more comfortable.
Well, there's no proposal of changing fees in this language here.
Right, but as far as just the process of, you know, what Ed was talking about with anything that would go on with that, I just don't want anything that we change to affect anyone's projects.
Can I, can I correct, Jeff, if I, if I read into this, that, that the owner has control over those fees in the long run to the council? I mean, what, what we do, do we have any?
We used to have budget. We have budget.
Right, so the, the fees that are in Appendix K right now, the, the, the calculations that, uh, determine how you establish what the fee is, that are in Appendix K now are also in the schedule of fees. Exact same language as in, you know, the multiplier of, uh, point zero zero one or point zero 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 one, the exact same language is in the current schedule of fees. So nothing's been changed in terms of how fees are, uh, calculated. They're just being taken out of Appendix K so that when the council, if they want to, change the fee structure in the schedule of fees, can do it without us having to go into Appendix K and all, and change that to make it consistent.
So we're streamlining the process.
So we have it two places right now, and you only need one.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
We don't change it any way.
Right, yeah, and I don't think it would take that much for us to add a motion to just make it contingent on the town manager's approval, and there's nothing else with that financially that'd impact anything.
And it, it doesn't, by, by taking this out of Appendix K, it does not yet have any impact on what Whole Oceans or any other project is going to pay for your, for your review.
And it, and it won't, because the, the, until that schedule of fees changes, whenever it might change.
Right, exactly.
That would be through the council.
Exactly, yeah.
Do we need a motion, Jeff, to remove this?
Or to include this in the public hearing? Are we okay with including that in the public hearing today, or?
I'm comfortable with that.
So, do you want a motion for that? Did you just make?
I just voted.
Make the motion. Say, say so moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? So, does anyone have any, since the, our public hearing is open for these changes? To proposed amendments to Appendix K? Does anyone have any comment?
In this language, by the way, um, the, once you make your recommendation to the town council, they can do whatever they want to with it. They can accept it, reject it, change it.
So this is still gonna filter through the council?
Yes, yeah.
So, answered my question.
Okay, very good. I think we must add the same question, that's good.
Well, yeah, I just, it, it's pretty much written in the rules that any financial decisions are made by the council, the council will know.
Right.
No one has the power to change anything in any other way, and so it's.
So we're not making any financial changes, we're just changing, take, deleting one area where it's listed, so.
Very good.
Anyone else?
I think I'd just make a quick comment on the idea of having a cap on it. I mean, there are some very significant projects that come before us that in time we want, you know, engineers, consultants, and that type of thing to assist us, and that can chew up a lot of money real quick. You know, we hire, so there's, I mean, an engineering firm to, uh, review some points of interest that we don't have the expertise to deal with. You know, at a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars an hour, they eat up a lot of money quick.
So that was something that was mentioned, there's a possibility down the road, but it's, I don't believe it's part of this tonight, so. But I, I agree with you.
As we do things on a case by case basis, it would be too bad to run, run out of money.
Yeah, but it's also too bad to charge people too much. Make it on a basis.
You're trying to, to attract business, you know, with the permits, the permit fees to drive by the town.
I mean, our, our job is to be thorough, and if we can't cover all the bases, we can hire professionals to assist us. And we can't curtail that in any way. Or feel guilty about billing, you know. But in a lot of cases, we'd be able to, it may be fairly obvious that we will need something, or, and we may be able to be specific to, so.
Yeah, maybe someday if they decide to put a cap in, they, they add different categories where the, the different fees, engineering fee, uh, and all that, so.
I was trying to get on the town's website to show you the schedule of fees, but, um, there's some difficulties here. I don't know what's going on with that.
So, any other comments for the public hearing?
Can you, can you cite examples of, of a time when we've had to have special consultants come in that cost us extra?
We've had, um, well, when we was doing a quarry, I think we, we hired a consultant on another property.
I know the applicant had consultants, um, I don't recall the Planning Board hiring a consultant. The, the people who were opposed to quarry, I think, provided their own consultant.
Would we, would we have to go all the way back to, uh, the infamous one that took how many years?
A E S?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure there was, Ed.
There must have been an awful pile of fees there.
No, did that, does anyone recall, did that money come out of the, the fees for the application, or, or, I mean, for the, for the permit? Or did they take additional monies out of, out of an account at that time? Does anyone recall?
None of us were here.
Well, I know that.
A E S was before.
You know, people had to take trips to Connecticut and Massachusetts and all over the place to.
Oh, yeah.
So here's, here's the language in the, in the schedule of fees now, at, uh, level one's twenty-five dollar fee, level two's fifty minimum, and then you have the, the multipliers to, to calculate the exact fee. Subdivision review fees, special planning board meeting fee is there, and then the consultants, the recording are simply the cost of services, whatever that, what else it be. So, uh, everything's still there, you know, in regard as who pays for what. So.
So, and that, that doesn't specify that there are certain things that there are extra monies that have to be paid nowhere in that?
Well, it says Planning Board consultants, for example, uh, the fee for that is the cost, the actual cost of what, whatever, whatever the charge is for the services. It doesn't say here that who pays for that. Um, like um in Appendix K, it it does say that the applicant is responsible to pay those fees. So that's not not, it's not clear in a schedule of fees, but it will be made clear. If the town council feels that the application review fee doesn't cover things like special consultant fees, then and the applicant should pay for that, that would be their decision to make. And that would be clarified in the schedule of fees.
Yes, I have a quick question, so the city of Bangor for a site development in excess of a hundred fifty thousand square feet at G F A, they charged two thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars. Is am I reading that right? Have you been able to check? Uh, non-residential.
Business.
It says non-residential, I, on their page, that's why I'm not.
Okay.
I think so.
Twenty eight hundred dollars for a hundred and fifty thousand square feet.
Yeah, or go or greater, right.
So maybe that's something Bucksport will wanna do, but it's still not what we're trying to do here tonight, so.
Well, eight acres is more than a hundred and fifty thousand, that's three hundred and thirty, so.
Any more comments for the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. The next item of business is a recommendation for adoption of a proposed amendment to the Bucksport Town Code, Appendix K, land use ordinance for the purpose of changing the minimum dimensions of parking space and making miscellaneous corrective edits.
I would make a motion that we uh adopt that proposed amendment, change it.
Uh, if I if I could just uh clarify that, you're you're not actually adopting, you're you're making a recommendation.
Yes, recommendation for adoption.
Second, second.
Any other, any discussion? All in favor?
The only implication of that now, are we gonna be held uh uh not liable for the additional door dings and stuff like that to happen in a narrow parking space? I think we.
It's a statewide accepted dimension, isn't it, Jeff?
Yeah, but it's not the only one, like like Ed pointed out at the meeting, if uh if the developer wants to make a bigger parking space, they they can do that.
It's a minimum.
This is the minimum, correct.
And it's just, that's what the MMA, if I remember back to the MMA plan, they had nine by eighteen on their drawing.
They changed that, by the way. So, they submitted a amended plan that shows it now ten by twenty.
Regardless, it makes it more flexible.
But now they have the task of figuring out where to make, come up with ten more parking spaces that they're losing from, potentially losing from the grading.
That road paved area behind the education building. I'm saying the front of the education building is toward the power plant side. Not back, it's above that. There was a road up there that went to.
Loria Building, it was called.
Yeah, with.
With a craft plant.
Craft plant, crap paper came in, unrailed, and the bales were unloaded. That area is fairly flat and torn down, the training, little training building on the side, that's gone. And there was a road behind the training center, over the railroad tracks, behind the training center, going up actually to the cafeteria shops and uh mechanical shops. And uh out to the coal towers and the woodyard. I don't see, uh there's already, uh I don't know, I I don't know what their grading is, or why they're not using that existing road that's uh up through there. I don't know, it's starting to sound strange already.
That's really not anything to do with us, is it?
Yeah.
Well, you you'll get a site plan at some point in time that will show the grading in the lot, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The site plan from Whole Oceans.
Yeah, Whole Oceans, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought we, we don't have to come up with a way of.
A solution.
Getting ten more parking spaces, that's their issue.
There's a little buffer up there too, it's called C M P substation, they own that. That that's out of bounds right there, that's that's C M P's property. And they have right ways through there too, easements. Telephone lines go up through that road, over the prospect.
So I'll forward the board's recommendation to the town manager and and hopefully it'll be taken up by the town council, it it could be as soon as their next meeting, next week.
Very good. Administrative business. Jeff?
No, I know something.
Okay, discussion, further discussion. Any discussion?
None.
I have a little, I might be out for the next couple of months, so. I've got a health issue that I have to deal with.
I'm getting close to one of those too.
Well, I've got, I'll be hit with radiation chemo on my throat, so.
Oh, jeez.
I I won't be much use to anybody for like two months.
Sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
Thank you, me too.
Anything else? That doesn't have to go in.
Can we do closed circuit TV?
If you want.
So you can, you know.
Yeah, I'll Skype you guys, yeah.
Yeah.
I won't be able to talk, but I'll give hand signals.
Motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?